The Constitution and laws of the United States and the state of Ohio. And the Charter and the ordinances of the city of Fairfield. And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of Sergeant for the city of Fairfield, Ohio during my continuance and said office. There you go, guys. Congratulations. Oh, if any family members, you got either one of you want to come up? Do it. Yeah. Shoot all the pictures you want to come on, and this is his short son. I remember when he was little. There you go. Look at that. There you go. Come on down. There you go. Ramples not quite so there. There you go. Or slightly on, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
All right. So I'd like to introduce you to the newest member of the Fairfield Police Department. This is Officer Trey Foster. He's joined by his mother and mayor here tonight to pin his badge. So Trey started with us 2023. He went to the academy. He's currently in the field training program. Should be out soon, out on his own, which I'm sure he's excited about. So Trey came to us from the healthcare field. But more importantly, Trey has served in the Ohio National Guard since 2011. He is currently a sergeant for first class, and he has been on quite a few combat deployments in service to our country. So we're honored to have him, and we hope he has a long outstanding career at the Fairfield Police Department.
All right. You want to raise your right hand? I and state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States, the state of Ohio, and the Charter and the ordinances of the city of Fairfield. And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of police officer for the city of Fairfield, Ohio during my continuance and said office. There you go, sir. Yeah, you stick that right in there. Stick it right in there and then big hit. Good job. All right, chief. Fire department, we're ready for you.
So it's always an exciting time. It's always an exciting time when we're able to welcome three new members to the Fairfield Fire Department family. So tonight, I'm going to bring in our three new members. Ross Kraft. Ross comes to us from the Burlington, Kentucky Fire Department. Ross has two and a half years in the fire service. We have Daniel Galt. Dan comes to us from the Monroe Fire Department, where he spent six and a half years as a firefighter. And we have Daniel Steed. Dan has seventeen and a half years in the fire service and comes to us from the Sharonville Fire Department. So those that are pinning their badge, if you would please come forward with them.
So tonight, we have a unique situation. You had to stand behind him there a little bit. Tonight, we have a unique situation. Councilmember Adam Kraft, who is coming around the corner, knows one of these gentlemen pretty well. If you can tell by looking at him, they're somewhat related. Come on up here, sir. Definitely by size. He's going to swear on his nephew.
I state your name. As a firefighter for the city of Fairfield, Ohio. I need some help. Swear to continually demonstrate professionalism and competence, respect and loyalty in the performance of my duties to serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity and to serve the citizens of Fairfield, Ohio with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America, the state of Ohio, and the city of Fairfield, Ohio. So help me God.
There you go. The other two, I can't follow that one. It has something, that big fella like that. I tell you, I love him. He's my very good dear friend. Help me cheer it up, cheer it up. All right, gentlemen, if you don't mind raising your left hand. Your right hand, I'm sorry. Did I say left? He raised. Your right arm. That's good. Oh, we needed that. All right. I state your name. As a firefighter for the city of Fairfield, swear to continually demonstrate professionalism, competence, respect, and loyalty in the performance of my duties to serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity and to serve the citizens of Fairfield, Ohio with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America, the state of Ohio, and the city of Fairfield, Ohio. So help me God. There you go. Didn't hurt at all. Now what? Do a penny ceremony? You guys could do that. Oh, yeah. Great. All right. Photo time. We'll let you do family pictures after we do this. You guys want to break into families however you want, since you're here. Yes, at this end, we start with this one. Or you guys back in, okay? Come on up. You have to bring a phone. I'll pick up. I'll be glad to take it. Get in there. They're all pushing. Somebody's phone. All right, guys. Oh, she's not. Yep. There you go. You know what? I know it, Charlie. All right. All right. We'll move on with the meeting here. Let's see here. We have a... All right. We have a special report from, there you go, from the Council on Aging Update. Nan Kay Hall and Sean K. Wan, K. Wine? Cowan, there you go. Very good. Welcome to, welcome to the podium, and thank you for coming tonight.
Well, thank you for having us. Good evening. My name is Sean Cowan, and I am here tonight to update you on the Butler County's elderly services program known as ESP. This program is funded by the taxpayers of Butler County, and it helps older adults in the county access basic services to help them remain independent at home. And it provides peace of mind for family caregivers who need to work or tend to other responsibilities. In 2023, ESP provided in-home supportive, supportive services to almost 500 older adults living in the city of Fairfield. And I'd like to start tonight by sharing a story from one of our most recent people that we highlighted in our annual report. And we do have some copies here for you tonight, if you would like one, but they can also be found online. So tonight, I'm going to share the story of Lee Moo. Lee Moo is an older adult who lives alone. He was a truck driver until an accident left him confined to a wheelchair. This change, of course, had a devastating impact on his life. His bills piled up, and so did the clutter in his apartment. He found himself cut off from the outside world, including his family. Things began to look up for Lee Moo when he connected with ESP. His care manager arranged to have his home cleaned and decluttered, and Lee Moo was given some special cleaning tools to make it easier to maintain things on his own. A home care aide now visits a few times a week to stay on top of things and help with laundry. Lee Moo had been experiencing food insecurities, but now he gets home-provided, delivered meals directly from the ESP. For Lee Moo, though, the biggest benefit is the ability to have his grandchildren be able to visit him in his home. In his own words, he said, "That's what's worth living, that's worth living for." ESP was created for people like Lee Moo. Older adults who, without help, would be forced to move to a nursing home, losing their independence, privacy, and connection to home and community. And for those who go on Medicaid in the nursing home, the cost of their care would be much higher for taxpayers. It costs about $384 a month to provide in-home care through the elderly services program, compared to almost $6,000 a month if they were in a Medicaid nursing home. This makes ESP both compassionate and cost-effective. Eligibility for this program begins at age 60. Eligible individuals need help with basic daily activities that you and I might take for granted. Things like getting dressed, bathing, cooking, or getting to a doctor's appointment. In 2023, the program helped more than 4,200 Butler County older adults remain independent in their homes. ESP is a true community partnership. The program is run by Council on Aging via contract with the Butler County Commissioners. This partnership includes local contracted service providers who provide the oversight, care, and supportive services that clients need. ESP clients have an important role to play in this partnership. Some clients, depending on their resources, have a copayment for their services, which helps the, which helps the program stretch funding to serve more people. Finally, taxpayers and voters play a very important role in this partnership. In fact, without their support, the program would not exist. Ninety percent of the program's funding comes from the Butler County Senior Services Tax Levy, which was first approved by voters in 1996. The most current senior services levy was renewed in 2020 by a record margin of 77%. It is a 1.3 mil levy that costs property owners about forty dollars, oh, forty dollars. Well, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. That seemed too low. Owners about forty dollars a year per $100,000 of property value. The levy makes up a very small portion of your tax bill, just one to two percent. The current levy will expire at the end of 2025 and must be approved again by voters in order for the program to continue. It has been nineteen years since the last increase to the senior services levy. ESP administrators work hard to ensure our tax dollars are used as effectively and efficiently as possible. In fact, there's been several, several recent innovative changes that are helping the program save money and serve more people. For example, there's a new program called Fast Track. Fast Track services for older adults who need short-term care after being discharged from a hospital or rehab facility, ensuring they have the essential care in place to recover at home. A new professional laundry service with local companies is taking the pressure off home health agencies that traditionally provided this service, saving money by using commercial laundry facilities. And using a gig economy model, clients can now use an app to hire their own home care workers and set up a schedule that meets their needs. I've shared a lot of information with you tonight about this important program, and I hope you take a moment to look over the program's annual report. It provides more information about who this program serves and its impact on the entire county. Everyone involved in the program is grateful for the strong support from the community. Community, thank you for your time, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I just said thank you for your time. Was there any questions?
Do you know the number of Fairfield residents that have served?
Five hundred, almost five hundred. Four ninety-eight to be exact.
I've gotten, I've gotten letters from them before, and I've met people like at the Village Green Park, a movie or something in the park. And so it's, it's great to have family members come and say, you know, we have this, you guys have the, they think it's we, but it's, you know, the Fairfield government. And so I've heard several, several really good comments on your services. So appreciate that very, very much.
Well, fantastic. Always nice to hear a compliment. We appreciate it. Hope you guys have a good evening.
Anybody else have questions? Cool.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other citizens here for any, just in general citizens' comments? This is your time to come up to the microphone. You're allowed to come up here. We'll give you about thirty seconds. No, I'm, about five minutes. And we'll give you five minutes. State your name and your address for the record, and then you're off and running.
Thank you. I'm Dave Groen at number six Carousel Circle. And I used to talk about the, the point of the agenda about the pot cultivation in dispensaries. Ohio revised code allows us to approve, regulate, or reject these type of facilities. And our neighbors in City of Hamilton, and I believe Westchester, have already rejected these. So I recommend setting a maximum limit of zero on both the cultivation and dispensaries for both of these. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I will make this very brief. I could probably do it in thirty seconds if you really timed me. Peggy Emerson with Fairfield Chamber, which is 670 Wessel. Short, for a very short time, that's why I just want to share that we are moving. Short, for a very short time, that's why I just want to share that we are moving. Um, so we are moving to seven hundred Neillis, so all the way around the block. But it'll be a great location for us, we're very excited about that. So just wanted to share that officially with the city council that we're moving and lots of great things happening, thank you guys.
When do you expect that to, uh, first, ended by end of year or?
Well, late October, that's my fingers crossed.
Okay, so first of the year.
We told Mr. Glover we'll be out by the end of October, so.
Yeah. Okay, cool. And you've doubled your space and, uh, been able to, you're going to be able to offer some additional services and classes and all kinds of good stuff. So that'll be a great location for many, many years. So, all righty. Any other citizen comments, come on up, guys.
Roy Abraham, thirty-three Carousel Circle. I wanted to say thank you for getting the roads paved, they look wonderful. I do have a question concerning that. On the back of my properties, there's a strip of land between the sidewalk and the road that has tire tracks and ruts and everything, is there any plan on fixing those up and down that road?
Mr. Mann is our Public Works Director and he'll respond to that.
We, we can take a look at that, uh, what was your address again, I'm sorry?
Thirty-three Carousel Circle.
We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it tomorrow.
Appreciate that.
You think it's from the, uh, from the pavers doing the, yeah, they?
Yeah, just parking there and getting stuff done and moving vehicles and, I mean, they're pretty deep.
Yep, normally they're, well, I'll take care of it a few, a few weeks later, but I'm sure now he's got it down.
Appreciate you coming.
Mm-hmm. Anybody else would like to make public comments? All righty, hearing anymore? We're gonna, we have two public hearings tonight, so what we're gonna do is we're going to, uh... Council reports. I'm sorry, council reports down here. None, none, yep. On the round?
I've got two here. I'm, uh, Councilman Paul has asked me to, uh, fill in for him tonight, uh, he's away on business. And here's a letter he got, I, I thought this was very thoughtful, uh, from a resident on Oberlin Drive. And it was really directed to Councilman Paul's, but really, um, focused on the police department. I'm gonna read it to Mr. Mayor, it's, it's a pretty quick letter. "On the late evening of July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, my German Shepherd escaped my backyard and decided to go on an adventure far from home, crossing, uh, very business, busy Neillis Road and Pleasant, uh, avenues, ending up in Rolling Hill subdivision. We contacted the police department when, uh, his Apple AirTag showed his location requesting assistance and notifying, uh, why we, uh, were in the neighborhood. I'd like to acknowledge our police department especially. Officer John Vinsky, badge one thirty-three, Officer Olivia Eckstein, badge one sixty-five, and dispatcher Kim Ferris. Once the dog was located, the officers, uh, were there to help corral him. They, um, relentlessly walked through many, many yards, I think including Mr. Timmer's yard as well, to find him. Uh, they answered calls for the search, they helped, uh, until he was located and safely brought home. We appreciate and respect the Fairfield Police Department greatly and these kind officers and dispatchers. Uh, thanks for what you do and, uh, show you all your appreciation for the city and the citizens and the adventurous Jefferson, the German Shepherd." So I thought that was really, I thought that was nice. The second, the second item, Mr. Mayor, is from, uh, Community and Public Relations Committee. Uh, hopefully everybody, I got mine in the mail today, the Fairfield Flyer should be arriving for September and October. Um, it's a great publication, it's full of a lot of information. Please, if you haven't seen it, uh, make sure you get that, it's also online on the website. Um, there will be a community blood drive at the Fairfield Fire Department Headquarters, um, which is right across from Sacred Heart, on September sixteenth from two to six. Um, and then call one eight-hundred-three-eight, three-eight-eight-GIVE to make an appointment. And finally, Fire Prevention Week, Tom, uh, is October, um, sixth through the twelfth. The theme is smoke alarms, make them, uh, work for you, change those batteries during fall and springtime changes. So very good information and very helpful, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. Any reports down this way?
I have one, thank the mayor.
All right.
Um, this week contractors will can, uh, return to the city and begin sandblasting, priming, and painting public fire hydrants. Residents and drivers may notice that some hydrants, uh, remain in a white primer coat for a few days until the yellow top coat of paint can be applied. During this process of being coated, all fire hydrants remain fully functional and available to use in case of an emergency. The contractor will continue painting hydrants, um, moving west to east across the city. City, uh, staff estimates that twenty, twenty-five percent of the city's hydrants, um, will be painted this year. Should you have any questions about this project, please contact our water division at five-one-three, five-eight-five, seven-seven, seven-five. Thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Very good, anybody else?
Me.
Go right ahead.
Just a couple of things, um, first of all, just wanted to report that for any of us that attended the Eagles Project Concert in Village Green, it was the biggest crowd I've ever seen here. And as it turns out, it was nearly three thousand, three hundred people in our little Village Green Park, so that's outstanding. We have four more concerts coming up, I believe, this summer. And the next big headliner is called Come Together, the Beatles Tribute Band. And they're gonna be performing, did I say that right? No. Right, but that is the big, the big headliner, yeah. Um, and they're, they'll be performing on the veranda, so. Okay, so you won't want to miss that, that is September fifth. And then also the Harbin Park renovations are moving along. And it looks like the vault, whatever that is for the splash pad, was installed last week. So can you give us a rough estimate of when you think the splash pad will be functioning? Is that what we're thinking? Okay, I get a lot of questions about the splash pad. Okay.
There's no reason to really open it when you're at the end of the year, so you might as well open it in the spring. Now, the playground will be open well before that, but.
I'm still unsure if that needs to be installed in the, um, five-year playground.
Now, I want to clarify something, you said somebody's gonna be playing from the balcony?
Yes.
Yeah, this Beatles Tribute Band, it's kind of like their iconic, like, very last concert they did on the rooftop. We're all gonna be sitting down there like in the street watching, up above.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's gonna be really neat.
Interesting, cool. All righty, well, I had a couple of notes, I, I, I had a couple of people text me who, what silly thought, uh, person came up with the idea of painting fire hydrants white. So I love the idea that it's a primer. I, I said, you know, I'm gonna find that out, but I told somebody, I said, that might be a, didn't use the word primer, but, um... Were they? Yeah, so, um, and then the Eagles Project, I was gonna, I had down here, that was a phenomenal event. Uh, I encourage you to keep programming, uh, big bands like that on every Thursday would be great. And then, uh, let's see here, moving on, anybody else?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind.
Oh, okay.
Um, I have a quick update for Public Works. Construction is scheduled to begin on the roundabout at Seward and Tyler'sville next week. There are portable message boards in each direction notifying the public that the intersection will be closed for twelve weeks starting Monday, August nineteenth. Um, and total side note, apologize for the emotional session before. Thank you, Chief, appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Shows you how much you, uh, have support of a council member for a police flyer.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, on a total separate note, I serve on the board for the SELF, uh, uh, program up in Hamilton, Ohio. Case is, then, anybody's never heard of it, it's truly an amazing, uh, organization that helps low-income families, low-income individuals, uh, from a variety of different, different, uh, benefits. So from education to training to helping them with home improvements. Um, most recently, they were approved after diligent, um, pursuant of grant funding, about two million dollars for lead abatement. And that's throughout the entire Butler County area. So, um, just in kind of celebration of that and make it aware for everybody in the city of Fairfield, I know Middletown's had a tremendous benefit from it, Hamilton has a benefit from it. If you know anybody who is in need of lead abatement on your home, these flyers are going to now be located here in the city building, um, probably right out front. And come in and take a flyer, let, let them get some assistance, there, like I said, there's about a two-million-dollar pot. Um, they're pursuing additional funds because the properties are rampantly coming available for the list for home improvement. They just did a massive, um, building in Hamilton for six residents there, which was incredible. And I think they're actively working on three or four more properties in Middletown. So I encourage, if you know anybody who has lead, uh, get, get it abated, get it out of there, get it safe for the, for the people who live there. So SELF can, can help out with that, that's my commercial.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job, Mr. Craftford, that swearing in, too, that was phenomenal. So it's always great to do a family member, I think that's cool as heck. All righty, now we will move to the public hearing. And, uh, what we're gonna do is I do a roll call for both, uh, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Medler, Commissioner O'Brien, Commissioner Hassler, Commissioner Lipsky, Commissioner Davidson, Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Robertson.
All righty, having all here, now I have, just read the public notice.
All property owners and citizens of Fairfield, Ohio are hereby notified that a joint public hearing between the Planning Commission and City Council has been scheduled for Monday, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven o'clock PM at the Fairfield Municipal Building, fifty-three fifty Pleasant Avenue, Fairfield, Ohio, four-five-zero-one-four. The purpose of the hearing is to solicit citizen input regarding a rezoning of zero-point-four-zero-nine-nine acres of lot number one-four-two-one-six from M-two General Industrial Zoning District to C-three-A General Business Modified Zoning District. Parties wishing to review the application may do so by visiting the Development Services Department located at the Fairfield Municipal Building. Questions may be directed to the department by telephone at five-one-three, eight-six-seven, five-three-four-five, or via email at development@fairfield-city.org. The department is open Monday through Friday between the hours of eight o'clock AM and five o'clock PM.
All righty, Madam?
Thank you, my name is Erin Lynn, I'm the Planning Manager for the city of Fairfield. I'm gonna start off with this first public hearing for a rezoning for QuickTrip, um, gas station. Um, they're requesting approval to rezone a small portion of their property from, um, M-two General Industrial to C-three-A General Business Modified. It's about, it's less than half an acre, it's about point-four-one acres of land. Um, QuickTrip, if those of you might not have heard of them, but they are a company that owns and operates, um, a chain of gas stations. Um, they're proposing to come into the Fairfield market, um, really in between the, um, the, the, the Speedway gas station to the north and then the Cincinnati Christian Schools to the south. Um, the site was originally part of the church property, so I have that portion on the left outlined in yellow. Um, the church really, um, up until recently, it owned all that property. So if you look at their campus going from the south to the north, so from the bottom to the top, that's their existing church. Then it's the school. And then, I mean, you can see that the red area is the proposed development. I have it blown up, so you can see there's a vacant, um, church building that they no longer use. And then there's, um, uh, soccer fields. And then just north of the soccer fields, that is the M-two portion that they're proposing to rezone. Um, this is just a zoning map, so this kind of shows you what the zoning of the area is. It's ninety-five percent, um, commercial, C-three or C-three-A. Um, when we have the opportunity to rezone a portion or any land that's industrial, that's within the Route Four corridor, um, we take that, um, we, we take advantage of that, um, just, just to remove that zoning classification as well as having one development under a single zoning district, um, makes sense. Uh, these are photos of the site, so, uh, what you see in there is that church building that is going to be demolished. Um, then you also see the, um, area of land, which is the soccer fields, which is part of the development, and then just a view looking south of the site. Um, this slide I'm gonna show you here real quick, on the right is the site plan and on the left, again, is that same area, just so you can see what we're talking about. Um, they're proposing to construct a seventy-three-hundred-square-foot convenience store. And then they will have two fuel canopies, one on the west side of the building adjacent to Route Four, which will have nine double-sided fuel dispensing islands, so it'll be eighteen, um, pumps. So it's, it's a pretty large, um, or pretty long, um, canopy. Then on the other side, so the backside, um, I, I don't have a, um, a, a pointer, but on the backside you can see a smaller canopy area, which has about five pumps. That will be for commercial vehicles and semi-trailer trucks. Um, so, so, just, I like to point out for reference, if you see at the very top where the Speedway is, that's about a three-thousand, a thirty-eight-hundred-square-foot building, so their building's gonna be almost double that. Um, I also want to point out that the curb cuts, um, in the middle of the site, so if you see right above the word Dixie, kind of coming into the middle, um, that's gonna be removed and then the curb cut to the bottom part, you can see that that's gonna be revamped, so it'll be a right-in, right-out only. Um, I do want to point out to you that, um, this rezoning is really not necessary for the development of this, um, business that's going in. Um, they have enough land, um, and, uh, to do their operation, uh, but this will contribute overall to a safer site circulation in terms of circulation for both their customers and for the church, um, patrons, because the, the dark driveway on the backside, that is actually what comes out from the church property and they can come around and exit onto what we call Service Drive. It's a Service Drive, but it's officially titled Service Drive. Um, the last thing I just wanted to show you is that these are just some elevations of what it will, it's not the exact elevation, but it's similar to what they will look like. Um, it's got some, um, brick and ephes with some raised parapets and an awning over the front door. It'll have a canopy that's got metal around the top and then just the, the basic plane poles holding it up. Uh, we always share this with you, this is the meeting schedule, um, tonight is the joint public hearing. Um, two days from now, um, we'll have Planning Commission and we'll meet in this room at six PM. They'll make a written recommendation back to you all and then you'll follow up with your second and your third reading in September. If you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to address them. I do know that the, uh, representative for the applicant is here in the audience who can give you a little more information about their company than, than I can.
All righty, any questions from council? Questions from the audience anywhere? All righty, and having none, we'll, uh, close this special.
Did you want to hear from the applicant?
Well, if, if there was no questions, I didn't know, yeah, I'd be glad to, if you'd like to.
Just thought it'd be nice, since we're not familiar with this business that, and due to the area, it might be nice just to, let you all know what their timeline is and tell him a little about their operations.
Hello, uh, my name is Macy Downey, I am the, um, zoning consultant for QuickTrip. Um, I'll let, um, Jonathan Haley here talk about the business. Um, but Erin gave a great presentation, um, I don't have a lot to add. Um, I'll just reiterate that this portion's very small. Um, the use itself is located in the C-three-A district. Um, and that drive is mostly for access to the school, so, um, if there are any zoning questions, I'm happy to help. Um, I'll just add that we're in process with our site plan review and I think, um, all building comments have been addressed, um, so we're really working through the process. But, yeah, I'll let, um, Jonathan Haley talk if there are any questions for me.
Good evening, my name is Jonathan Haley, uh, Real Estate Project Manager for QuickTrip, one-three-five-zero-zero, Riverport Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. Uh, I'll be real brief, just wanted to give everyone a quick rundown on kind of who QuickTrip is. Uh, we're a family-owned business, I'm out of Tulsa, Oklahoma, been around for about seventy years. Uh, we have a little over a thousand locations nationwide. Um, just now starting to touch the Ohio market. Um, just some brief things about QuickTrip, like I said, we're family-owned. A site like this will provide, um, anywhere from, I would say, thirty to thirty-five really, really good jobs for the community here. Um, I myself started out in the stores as a store clerk, um, and worked my way up through the company and now I'm a project manager opening stores all around the nation. Uh, we are very, uh, strong in promoting from within, so when I say good jobs, these are really, really good jobs. Also, um, we, um, we partner really well with the community, we are very involved in all the communities that we serve in. Um, so we look at this as a, you know, really a partnership in the community versus just coming and opening up an establishment and just doing business. Uh, we love our communities that we serve in. Um, with that being said, when we open a, a building like this, um, we usually let it operate for about fifteen to twenty years. Um, then after that, we usually tear it down and build a new one. So, um, we don't, we don't really do the, the facelifts, we just would much rather tear it down and, and build new, uh, which is what we're doing in a lot of our markets right now. Uh, we offer very, very great scholarship. We offer very, very great scholarship opportunities for all employees. We do tuition reimbursement for all employees, no matter if you're full-time or part-time. And with that being said, we don't hold you to, you know, we'll pay for your school, but you have to stay with our company. We'll pay for your school and you can go work for NASA if you wanted to. We're a safe place for kids. And the National Safe Place Organization, I'm sure some of you folks have heard of it. We partner very well with them, and it's not just for kids either. I can speak for, since I've worked in the stores, we provide shelter for people who are in danger. So if anyone feels like they are in danger, they can come into our store. We advertise it on the front of our building, all of our buildings, that if you need help, you come to us and we'll put you somewhere safe until help can arrive. I think last year we were able to help right under 600 kids that just ran into our store asking for help, because they know that we will provide that for them. We, as you saw in the elevation in the picture, we have beautiful stores and we take the looks of our stores very seriously. We keep up very well with our landscaping, with our trash pickup, with the cleanliness of our concrete. We provide a very beautiful site for the community and we're very excited to be here. Like Macy said, we're working through some final civil comments and our building plans have been approved. That building will really be mostly what it looks like, wrapped in brick with some ephes, with some landscaping, and then the canopy, like she said, will be pretty straightforward. But like I said, we really look forward to serving this community long-term and being here for a while, so I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Anybody have any questions? Sorry for skipping you, sometimes I get, nobody saying anything anywhere, you're like, okay, good, let's go. So sorry about that, it's good additional information. It's good to hear.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Alright, now we'll close. Okay, so now we'll close that public hearing, we'll move to the second one. Madam Clerk?
All property owners and citizens of Fairfield, Ohio are hereby notified that a joint public hearing between the Planning Commission and City Council has been scheduled for Monday, August 12th, 2024 at 7 o'clock PM at the Fairfield Municipal Building, 5350 Pleasant Avenue, Fairfield, Ohio, 45014. The purpose of the hearing is to solicit citizen input regarding modifications to sections 1131.10 Non-Residential Districts Use Table and Standards, 1131.12 Non-Residential Districts Use Specific Standards, and 1171.02 Defined Words of the Planning and Zoning Code as part of the Fairfield Codified Ordinances. Parties that wish to review the proposed changes may do so by visiting the Development Services Department located at the Fairfield Municipal Building. Questions may be directed to the department by telephone at 513-867-5345 or via email at development@fairfield-city.org. The department is open Monday through Friday between the hours of 8 o'clock AM and 5 o'clock PM.
Alright, Mr. Catherine?
Alright, Mr. Mayor and members of council, members of Planning Commission, thank you for the opportunity. Erin and I are kind of tag team in the two joint public hearings tonight. So I'm doing the proposed code changes related to marijuana businesses. So if you all recall, I know you all heard a presentation just maybe six weeks ago or so for the Planning Commission and members of the public, this may be a little new. Back in November, there was obviously a statewide vote and recreational marijuana, also called adult-use marijuana, was approved by the voters in Ohio. In December, as a result of that vote, council voted to put a temporary prohibition on marijuana businesses in town to allow the rules to be developed through the Department of Commerce and some other avenues. Those rules have been developed over the last number of months. The temporary prohibition expires this September. There's actually legislation on your agenda later tonight to extend that briefly, pending the outcome of this hearing tonight and the next couple readings on this legislation. In late May, I gave a, myself and Mr. Walterman gave a council manager briefing presentation on this topic after hearing from you at that meeting. There was not universal agreement on direction, but we heard enough that we decided to go forward and make some proposed legislation for tonight. Obviously, there's opportunities to amend or change should you or the Planning Commission want to make any amendments to that information. Okay, so just for the sake of everyone understanding what we're talking about here, there's basically four types of marijuana businesses that are allowed in the state of Ohio under the laws that have been passed. There's cultivators, those are the folks that grow and harvest, package and transport the marijuana. There are processors, so they actually convert the raw product into consumer products. There's testing laboratories, there's not many of those, but they do laboratory testing of the products for cleanliness and potency and that sort of thing. And then, of course, there's dispensaries, that's where they sell to the public. And there are adult-use dispensaries, that is also known as recreational marijuana. And then the medical marijuana, they're actually separate in the Ohio laws. So they can be combined into one location, or they can be separate retail locations as dispensaries. So that's just basically basic terminology. As the clerk mentioned in her reading there, we're talking about, we're proposing three changes to the Planning and Zoning Code. Planning and Zoning Code, of course, was just approved by you all in March, so these would be the first changes to the new code. We're recommending some changes to the non-residential use table, the non-residential use specific standards, and then defined words. I'm not really going to spend a lot of time on defined words tonight, because there's not really much to talk about. We're actually just, the definitions, we're just saying, whatever the state definitions are, are the same as our definitions. So I really want to spend time on the use table and the standards that we're proposing. So in the use table here, so that little snippet there that you see in the major part of the screen, that's actually what our use table looks like in our zoning code, it's a table of uses, land uses. So our recommendation as staff is that marijuana dispensaries, adult-use and medical, be permitted with standards. So if you see that middle line there where it's kind of bold, the PS that's in that category, that stands for permitted with standards. So we are recommending that it's permitted in standards in three zoning districts, C3, C3A, and the SE, which is suburban entertainment, which is jungle gyms zoning, basically. And I'll get into a little more of what those standards are here in the next couple slides. We are also recommending that cultivators, processors and testing laboratories be permitted, so there would be a P in the chart for those uses in the M2 General Industrial Zoning District. So I talked about permitted with standards, so what standards are we recommending? Are we proposing right now? So we came up with nine local Fairfield-specific standards. Number one is to limit the number of dispensaries to a total of one. That was something we heard from a lot of you at the May meeting, so that is in there as the number one standard. Number two, adult-use and medical can operate in the same location. There's obviously more text than this, I've abbreviated it for the slides, but the full sentences are in your packet. Number three, here's where we start to get into more specific things. So dispensaries shall only be on a lot within the C3 or C3A zoning districts with a minimum of 100 feet of street frontage on Route 4 or on any lot in the SE district. That, the first part of that, with 100 feet of frontage on C3 and C3A, that is the same standard as we have for car lots on Route 4. The idea is, we have some C3 and C3A zoning that goes on to some of the side streets, and we thought it was important, if we're going to have one of these, it should be on the main drag, it should be on Route 4 itself. So we're requiring that people have at least a minimum of 100 feet of frontage, so no flag lots, nothing on some of the smaller side streets. If people are coming up to go visit it, we think it should be on Route 4. In the SE zoning district, that is a little different, we thought, because Jungle Jim owns and controls all of that property and he doesn't have as much frontage available. So if somebody wanted to partner with Jungle Jim or lease space from him, we thought there were other opportunities in his campus, people already are used to going there. It's a destination for shopping and for some of the other businesses. So we thought that that is, that requirement to be located on Route 4 is not necessarily as important for the SE zoning district. So that's standard number three. Standard number four, shall be in a standalone, single-tenant building. So our thought was, and we heard some feedback from you, that you wanted, if we do have a dispensary, you want it to look nice. It's easier to make a standalone building look nice through improvements to that property, to the facade of the property, to the landscaping. It's harder to do that in a multi-tenant building. The other thing we thought about in a multi-tenant complex, a little strip center or shopping center, there may be people visiting other stores in there that they may not want to be exposed to those businesses. They may not want to take their kids to, you know, if they're walking to get a haircut or go to a little retail store or small restaurant, they may not want to walk past the dispensary. So you're able to control that more in a standalone, single-tenant building. Number five, shall comply with the Route 4 corridor overlay standards. So the overlay standards basically are the new, some new standards that we have in the zoning code now to basically improve, require people to improve their property, so they have to invest in their facade, invest in their landscaping, have better signage. So we want, if we have a dispensary, we want it to be a nice-looking building. Number six, shall not be within 1,000 feet of another dispensary. Actually, state law is a little bit higher standard than that. But if the state law ever changes, we wanted to have that minimum, so they're not congregated or not close together. Shall not be within 500 feet of religious facilities, public library, public playground, public park or open space or education facility. That basically mimics the state law. The state law has these exact same requirements, 500 feet from all these types of facilities. Number eight, shall comply with all applicable provisions of the Ohio Rebalies Code and Ohio Administrative Code. And number nine, shall comply with provisions of Chapter 739 of the Fairfield Codified Ordinances. That's just another chapter in the business regulation part of our code. So those are the nine use-specific standards that we are recommending be implemented. I do want to touch on one of them, so there was, I went, we created this map that shows the, what a 500-foot separation would be. So when you look at this map, the green is around parks. The lighter blue is around churches, the darker blue is around school facilities. We, I've mentioned this in an earlier meeting, we have a lot of storefront churches here in town, more than I think most people know that we have, especially in Route 4 corridor. So I don't have a pointer here, but Route 4 basically starts in the lower corner, right above the words Earth Star Geographics, and then it kind of goes up and sort of cuts diagonally up into Hamilton. And so you can see that there are limits on where these things can go already based on a lot of churches and a couple of schools in the corridor. So there's already some limitations where these things can go. We thought about increasing the separation from 500 up to a larger number. So we did 1,000 feet separation and it basically was a de facto prohibition. So that, we thought did not make sense. If we're going to allow one, they have to go somewhere, so we thought 500, that's the state law. We thought mimicking that was the right decision.
Greg, for the audience, can you point out what Jungle Gyms is, just for visualization purposes on there?
Yes, and I'm sorry that we don't have a laser pointer. You see that little, little thing hanging down, the southern tip, right kind of above the D and the word Fairfield? There's a little section of roadway that kind of points down.
There you go, Adam, there you go.
That's Jungle Gym, yes. Little thing hanging down at Gilmore Road, if you go straight up.
Straight up Gilmore, that, if you go straight up Gilmore, you run right into Jungle Gyms. You had right in, right in there. The dark blues are kind of the schools, the freshmen and the high school, so it's just kind of in front of that.
Did we look at 750 feet, Greg?
I did not look at that.
It's still, it still bothers me that you've got 1,000 feet separation for competitiveness of dispensaries, but only 500 feet for schools. I know that's state, right? That's a state guidance or state law?
The state has that same, we could, we could add larger from the schools and less from churches. I mean, we can parse and split that a little bit if we wanted. We did not try anything other than this at this point.
I appreciate that. Anyway, I guess I would defer that to the Planning Commission for consideration on that.
I did, just for the benefit, mostly of the Planning Commission, who did not hear the May presentation, I talked a little bit about the state rules that exist. And so here's some of the major state rules. 500 feet from parks and schools, at least a mile from another facility. And then there's a lot of rules on the bottom of the screen around financial responsibility, ownership, about being 21 to operate, to be in there, hours of operation, minimum security, employee training, all that sort of thing. So we didn't have to duplicate all of those rules in our local ordinances, because they're already in the state rules. So that is the presentation for tonight. The, I did not have any next steps, but the Planning Commission meets this Wednesday in two days and their obligation is to give you back a recommendation for your September meetings for consideration for second and third readings.
Alright, any more questions from council? We'll wait for it comes back.
Greg, actually, I have a question, sorry, Mr. Mayor, a question. We had the chance to hear the voters' opinion back when the ballot was placed through. A majority of the entire city was in favor of this moving forward. Is there an opportunity for businesses to weigh in, especially on the Route 4 corridor? We talked about Jungle Jim, the special zoning district. Guess that's my first question, is there's an opportunity for them to weigh in over on that side of things? And then the second question would be, if Jungle Gyms occupies a certain specific zoning area in the future, if that were ever changed, would we put some kind of asterisk or caveat in there that would say that that would revert back to a different regulation for this type of approval?
I have talked with Jungle Jim about our, these recommendations. I've not talked with many other property owners yet, because there's just so many of them.
So many, of course, of course.
It's hard to do. I do know that some of them have called here, because they are asking questions, because I think some companies are calling them, asking about leasing and that sort of thing. So the word is out there a little bit. The Jungle Gym zoning, there are some minimums on that. It has to be at least 40 contiguous acres and has to be under common ownership and things. So no one else, barring another, somebody imitating what Jungle Jim has, nobody else is likely to have an SE zoning district. If Jungle was ever to sell off part of his property, it would kick out of the SE zoning district and would go into probably the C3 or C3A zoning district. So that would, that requirement about being on Route 4 would take, come into effect at that point.
Okay, and then the 100 feet would no longer be applicable either, as far as storefrontage?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Councilmember Craft, good question.
A question. I believe it's, you said that one of the requirements was it had to be an independent building just for that? It could not be like a big building, like the SC district for Jungle Jim, isn't that one great big building? So does that, those two caveat, I mean, is that like saying that excludes that? Because it's not one little building?
Potentially, he could build an outlot.
Okay.
You know, carve out a little parcel of its own and have a little separate building.
Okay.
This is, you know, can be changed at your request, but it's just, as staff was thinking about this, we thought that would, that made some sense to have it as a standalone for a number of reasons. But certainly can be changed, there are folks who maybe own multi-tenant properties who would like to be a landlord, who may not like this rule. But we thought it had enough merit to make it, to recommend it for you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just want to say thanks, Greg. We had a lot of questions last time and there was some uncertainties to the actual official recommendation, so thank you to your team for making that very clear.
And I should say Steve Walterman and Erin Lynn have been big helps on this. We're all learning this stuff together, it's new code, it's new laws, we're watching it develop from the state and in other communities, and so we've all been spending a lot of time on it.
Has the state, where's the ball dropping and balancing on the revenue to? Is it still the percentage, 20-some percent of the 10% or 36% of the 10%?
Yes, the provisions on taxation have not changed from the initial vote, that was the initial ballot issue that was approved. So there's a 10% excise tax that's added to any sales of adult-use marijuana, not the medical, but the adult-use recreational. There's a 10% excise tax and the host community would be eligible for 36% of that 10%.
Of the 10%, that's correct, okay. Okay. All right, any other questions? Any more questions from the audience? All righty, so, so you know, the Planning Commission will take this on Wednesday night at 6, correct, 6 o'clock? So if you'd like to address that, is that right, Scott? Okay, I thought you did 7. You're welcome to come here, I'll be in this room, 6 o'clock, Wednesday night. And that's when they will get into the little more nitty-gritty, so, all righty. Having no more questions, we'll close that public hearing, and we'll move on to the agenda. Approval of the minutes before you, any additions or deletions, we'll have them stand as read. Moving to old business, Councilmember Davidson.
Just for the record, if you want to note that we've received the recommendation of the Planning Commission, that we've received a request from the applicant to withdraw their application, and then if he'll make a motion to withdraw that from the agenda.
Based on what he just stated, I'll make a motion to withdraw the first item from the agenda.
Second. Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. All right.
I have an ordinance, pending ordinance number 166-84, the codified ordinance of Fairfield, Ohio, Section 1130, Point 01B2, the City of Fairfield, Ohio zoning map. Hold second reading, pending Planning Commission recommendation.
Third, we have an ordinance to amend Sections 1131.10, 1131.12, and 1171.02 of Ordinance 166-84, the codified ordinance of Fairfield, Ohio, to enact zoning provisions regarding marijuana cultivation, processing, testing laboratories, and dispensaries, and to place a limit of one on the number of businesses, business locations operating as adult-use and medical dispensaries permitted within the City of Fairfield. Hold, that is a second reading, pending Planning Commission recommendation.
All righty, thank you, sir. Public Utilities, Councilmember Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one ordinance to authorize the city manager to approve and adopt Fairfield's sustainability plan called Fairfield Sustains. The plan dated June 27, 2024, and I'm going to keep that as a second reading. And Adam, that is on the website, if, if somebody wants to go in and look at that.
Yes, it is, it's available for review on the website.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
All righty, you guys are leaving right when the excitement gets going here, so we're talking about finance. All right, moving on to new business.
I'd like to make a motion to read all new business by title only, please.
Motion in second for title only, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Give me a second, I'm going to start doing it this way, here we go. Forget me, I'm trying to do it this way, there we go, it's that second page, all right. Parks and Recreation, Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Mr. Timmer.
We have one ordinance tonight for Parks, Recreation, and Environment. The ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Mount Pleasant Blacktopping for the cart path resurfacing at South Trace Golf Course. This project was considered as part of the 2024-2028 Capital Improvement Program, and will resurface the cart path for all 18 holes of South Trace. The project was publicly bid, and three bids were received. Thank you.
All righty, Councilmember Bezzel.
Thank you, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Mount Pleasant Blacktopping Company Incorporated for the 2024 South Trace, South Trace Cart Path Resurfacing Project and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings.
Motion in second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
And I'd like to move to adopt.
Motion in second for adoption, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. I have to say that is very much needed.
Yes, there are a lot of golfers that are going to be happy.
I've been asked and asked and asked, so I'm glad this is getting done. Holy cow. All righty, let's see here, we voted in, we adopted, yep, okay. Public Safety, City Man, City Manager, Mr. Timmer.
We have two ordinances tonight for public safety. The first ordinance is to adopt new sections and amend various sections of the Traffic and General Offenses Codes. Periodically, the city updates its Traffic and General Offenses Code in order to conform them to the extent possible to recent amendments in state law and provide the latest versions of traffic and general offenses and other ordinances for use by the city's law enforcement and safety personnel. The second ordinance is to amend Chapter 739 of the Codified Ordinances relative to medical marijuana and adult-use cannabis control. Suspension of the rules is requested so that the amendments can be effective prior to September 10, 2024, to extend the prohibition of medical marijuana and adult-use cannabis operators until the effective date of amendments to the City of Fairfield zoning code. Thank you.
All righty, Mr. Myers reading for Mr. Timmer, or my, Mr. Paulus.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item is an ordinance to adopt Sections 331, Point 45, 337, Point 34, 505, Point 19, 509, Point 10, and 521, Point 19, and amend various other sections of the Traffic and General Offenses Code of the Ordinance Number 166-84, Codified Ordinance of Fairfield, Ohio. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second, third readings, please.
Motion in second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion in second for adoption, comments from council, comments from audience, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, the second item is an ordinance to amend Chapter 739 of the Ordinance 166-84 of the Codified Ordinance of Fairfield, Ohio, relative to medical marijuana and adult, adult-use cannabis control and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second, third readings.
Motion in second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, motion to adopt.
Motion in second for adoption, comments from council, comments from audience, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. All right, Public Utilities, Mr. Timmer.
We have one ordinance tonight for public utilities. The ordinance authorizes the city manager to enter into a contract with Building Crafts for the completion of the Sodium Hypochlorite and Fluoride System Improvements Project at the city's water treatment plant. Our existing chlorine gas equipment and the fluoride feed equipment are nearing the end of useful life and must be replaced. The city wishes to replace the chlorine gas system with a bulk liquid sodium hypochlorate system in order to eliminate the severe human health and safety risk associated with storage and use of 1-ton pressurized chlorine gas cylinders. The chemical treatment systems are needed so that the city can comply with regulatory requirements for disinfection and fluoridation. Thank you.
All righty, Councilmember Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Building Crafts Incorporated for completion of sodium hypochlori, how do you say that? Hypochlorite and fluor, fluoride system improvement projects at the city water treatment plant and declare an emergency. I'd like to make the motion to suspend the second and third readings.
Second.
Motion in second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion in second for adoption, comments from council?
Yes, Adam, this technology is proven, I mean, this is, this is a done deal, right? It's, it's out there, it's...
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely proven technology, many other utilities have done the same thing, we've done some site visits.
No impact on water quality.
And we've done pilot projects to confirm no impact on water quality, yes.
Thank you.
All right, comments from audience, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Public Works, Mr. Timmer.
We have one ordinance tonight for Public Works. The first ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Morton Salt for the purchase of Road Salt. The purchase of Road Salt would be made under the new contract in conjunction with the Butler County Engineers Office. The purchase would be made, I'm sorry, the purchases would be for stocking the salt building located at the Public Works facility. This project is funded through the city's annual operating budget. Thank you.
All righty, Councilmember Crabb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, of an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the purchase of Road Salt from Morton Salt Incorporated. This will stand as the first reading. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. You know, it is kind of funny, we think of Morton Salt that little jar, or that box we have at home on our shelf, and this is bigger than that box, right? It's a little bit bigger. All right, Finance and Budget, Mr. Timmer.
We have four ordinances tonight for Finance and Budget. The first ordinance is to reaffirm the city manager's authority to execute renewal agreements for medical pharmacy, dental, stop-loss, and run-out claims for the period beginning August 1, 2024 through July 31, 2025. The second ordinance is determining to reduce and recertify special assessments levied for the purpose of constructing certain improvements. The cooperative agreement entered by the city and the Port of Greater Cincinnati on February 1, 2004 requires the reduction and recertification of special assessments levied for the purpose of certain improvements at the Cincinnati Mills parking garage. The city is the pass-through entity for special assessments, and the amounts are already appropriated in the 2024 annual operating budget. The third and fourth ordinances are for contractual and non-contractual appropriations. The contractual appropriations total $3,040,000 and are for three projects in the Public Works, Public Utilities, and Parks and Recreation Departments. The non-contractual appropriations total $165,104 and include six projects from the Parks and Recreation and Public Utilities Departments. Thank you.
All right, from Finance, Councilmember Brill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first one is an ordinance to reaffirm the city manager's authority to execute renewal agreements for medical, pharmacy, and dental plans, stop-loss, and run-out claims processing for the period beginning August 1, 2024 through July 31, 2025, and de, declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Second.
Motion in second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion in second for adoption, comments from council? Comments from audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Number two is an ordinance determining to reduce and recertify special assessments levied for the purpose of constructing certain improvements and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Second.
Motion in second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion in second for adoption, comments from council? Comments from audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Third is ordinance to amend Ordinance Number 166-23, entitled, "An Ordinance to Make Estimated Appropriations for the Expenses and Other Expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024." These are the contractual appropriations. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Second.
Motion in second for, for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion in second for adoption, comments from council? From audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And the fourth and final one is an ordinance to amend Ordinance Number 166-23, entitled, "An Ordinance to Make Estimated Appropriations for the Expenses and Other Expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024." These are the six non-contractual appropriations. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Second.
Motion in second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion in second for adoption, comments from council? From audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Before we go to the meeting schedule, young man out there at the camera land, are you from a TV station, or? Fox 19, well, welcome, good. Thank you, welcome here. I didn't catch the side of the camera somewhere or something, I was... Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Good. All righty, meeting schedule, please, Madam Clerk.
Monday, September 9, Council Manager briefing, 6:00 p.m., regular meeting, 7:00 p.m. Monday, September 23, Council Manager briefing, 6:00 p.m., regular meeting, 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 15, Council Manager briefing, 6:00 p.m., regular meeting, 7:00 p.m.
All right, thank you very much, no excuse to executive session.